I'd like to call our March 15th School Committee Meeting to order. If you could all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you may stand in for one moment, certainly remember all our servicemen and women serving our country, both home and abroad. And as for a moment of silence in general, then I have the Superintendent from the Mar-...
Sure. Please keep in your hearts and minds the family of Carol Wong. Carol was a professional, a parent professional in the school system for almost thirty years and absolutely one of our very, very best and caring employees. And she served at Montclair, at Atlantic, and Squanum. And as she passes, I want to think of her family and Carol at this time. Thank you.
So the first item on the agenda, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of March 1st, have a motion. motion by Ms. Isola, second by Ms. Hubley. All those in favor? Post, you guys have it. Next item on the agenda is open forum. Anyone wishing to make a presentation before the committee? If you really want to. Yeah. Roll call, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Bergoldi, he's not given a seat.
He's unexcused absence for the...
Ms. Vimeges, present. Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
Ms. Isola.
Present.
Ms. Lebo.
Present.
Ms. Mahoney.
Present.
And Mayor Koch.
Present.
And Mr. Doherty, Owen Doherty from Quincy High School.
Anybody wishing to speak at open forum, this is your time. Please just step up to the mic, give your name and address, and you have four minutes.
My name is Lisa Johnson. I live at fifty-one Lyon Street. Good evening. Thanking Mayor Koch, Superintendent DiCristofaro, and esteemed school committee members. I am here this evening to speak to you on behalf of the Quincy Coral Boosters. We'd like to thank the district for its continued financial support of high school students who auditioned and were accepted for the NMEA All-State Coral Festival this year. Two students representing Quincy attended at no cost to them. Thank you. As a parent and volunteer organization, the efforts of the Quincy Coral Boosters is to ensure that coral arts education and programming across our school district is robust and reflects the interests and needs of our children. Students at the high school level should have access to and benefit from a full-time coral vocal general music teacher assigned to each school. Two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year was the last year with two Quincy Public School high school coral teachers. Students who want to earn degrees in coral arts after high school are not prepared to do so currently in the Quincy Public Schools because of the limited access to the course material and performance opportunities that our current structure allows. Students and their parents should not have to find ways to get fundamental preparation on their own. Students need more options and more opportunities related to coral arts education. With a coral music teacher at East High School, these teachers will be able to teach other musical lectures, serve as vocal director of high school musicals, serve like other faculty in the life of the school. For example, study hall teacher, daily duty, and after-school help. They're thereby getting familiar to the student body beyond those just students performing in coral arts. And they will offer opportunities for performing arts options such as a cappella, men's and women's ensembles, and different genres of coral music performance, plus talent shows, high school coral exchanges, and more coral festivals. This is much more in line with other schools that are comparable to Quincy in size and demographics are already offering their students. In our data collection phase in the fall, we asked Quincy Public School music faculty for information about the history and background of the coral arts, including current needs. We found that since the reduction of staffing at the high school levels, there has been a combined drop of almost twenty students participating in high school choir. Before the assignment of just one coral teacher for both high schools, the high school choir rooms remained open for business throughout the school day and beyond. Now, the high school choir room is dark at North Quincy High School in the mornings most days, and the high school choir room at Quincy High School is dark in the afternoons. It should be noted that the recent addition of another band director has resulted in increased opportunities for band students across the district. Larger enrollment, retention of students involved in band, and a stronger, more vibrant, and exciting band program. An increase in the coral arts education would result from added staff would likely result in increased enrollment and retention of students involved in coral arts. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak at open forum? Last call. Close a portion of the meeting. Next on the agenda, Superintendent's report. DiCristofaro.
Thank you very much. We have one Quincy High School committee member. Luke was wondering if Quincy High School was... Well, thank you very much. We're very, very fortunate to have some real scientists with us this evening who work so very, very hard in the science fair. So I don't know whether we start with our department heads or Mr. Tagg or Mr. Shaw. Mr. Shaw, you're right, department heads? Terrific. You're all so shy, I know.
Mayor Koch, Dr. DiCristofaro, members of the school committee. I'm Ed Ruth Smith, Science Department Chair. Thank you for having us tonight. On Wednesday, February fifteenth, approximately a hundred and twenty students presented to over seventy volunteer judges and two hundred and fifty spectators at the tenth annual Quincy High School STEM event. The event featured one hundred and five projects from grades nine through twelve spanning fields of biology, chemistry, environmental science, physics, and engineering. Students worked individually or as a team to investigate topics such as heart rate, nutrition, alternative energy, and innovative building materials. Project scores were tallied and weighted based on scientific approach, creativity, understanding, and presentation. From our fair, we had fourteen students move on to the regional science fair last weekend at Bridgewater State University and were awarded two honorable mentions, two third prizes, and one second prize for our entries. We now have four students and three projects moving on to the Massachusetts State Science Fair at MIT on May fifth and sixth. Would like to recognize the top four students from our fair who impressed judges at both the school and regional level. Rachel Shen, Dash Chin, Cle Hamzalari, and Alexander Ireland. Rachel Shen, you may remember from last year with her winning project. Bear with me. Does the invasive Japanese honeysuckle inhibit sunflower germination and guacque growth more than the native coral honeysuckle? Unfortunately, she's unable to make it tonight, but I'm excited to inform you that she won our fair for the second year in a row, moved on to regionals, and will be attending the state competition with her project titled Controlling Fragmites by Defeating Stored Nutrients. I now welcome Alex Ireland to present his project.
Exciting to be here. So my project is about a post-disaster environment. So let us imagine a tsunami were to hit a large city like Tokyo. What would hap- how would you house thirty-seven million people? So what would happen today is that they would live in these pods that would be spread out for miles and miles, sort of like tents. The problem with this is that with thirty-seven million people, that would take four point five billion square feet. And a country like Japan or large cities in China, they don't have that much space. So I wanted to find a solution for this problem. So I did some research. I discovered that a truncated octahedron, that's the shape right here, this shape is very easily stackable, as you can see here, I have fourteen of these. They can stack very easily on top of each other, and they're very efficient. In fact, they're so efficient that they save seventy-two point nine percent of space by stacking. So people would be able to live in these, and that way there would be enough space to house everyone in a post-disaster environment until the city will be rebuilt.
I'm not sure if he said Alex is in the ninth grade. Next up is Dash Chin.
Good evening. My name's Dash Chin. My partner, Cle Hamzalari, is unfortunately unable to make it today, but we're both juniors from Quincy High School, and our project title was Testing the Efficiency of Oil-Degrading Bacteria. And so the overall overarching problem that we wanted to tackle with this experiment was that we wanted to see in what way we could efficiently clean up spilled oil. And recently, in the last thirty to forty years of American history, that has totally become more of a controversial and pressing problem throughout the United States. So what we wanted to do is we wanted to see how we could do this with bacteria. And so what we did was that we obtained and grew bacteria with the ability to use oil as its own source of fuel. And so the way in which we did, conducted this experiment was that we took the bacteria and isolated it in an environment with, and rich with nutrients of either iron, sulfur, zinc, or selenium. And we grew them in these test tubes for around a week. And at the end of the experiment, we analyzed the solutions with a spectrophotometer. And with this machine, we were able to see the absorption of the solution. And basically, with the absorption of the solution, we would, we were able to see whether or not compounds were broken down. As if the solution is able to absorb more light, there is more compound pressure. So basically, what we found was that our hypothesis, which was that if zinc-rich solutions had bacteria and oil in them, the bacteria would be more efficient, was supported as we found that the solution was beneficial to the bacteria, and it was able to more efficiently break down the compounds in which they were able to take down the absorption of the solution.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dash. And a really unique opportunity for these two young men was they were able to conduct their experiment at Quincy College. They worked closely with professors of some of the state-of-the-art technology that they have to offer at their campus. Next up is Ken Panaro from North Quincy High.
Mayor Koch, Superintendent, and school committee members. February seventh, we had our fifty-ninth consecutive science fair. Our science fair is as old as the regional science fair in Massachusetts for Region Five. Our students, seventy-eight strong, started their proposals in September, carried through with a research paper on their proposal, followed the scientific method, continued on doing their research, keeping daily logs constantly, keeping up with what they had to do, presenting to their classes, and then ready for the fair where we, excuse me, where we had, oh, numerous PhDs from M.I.C., BU, all come to judge. So it's a scary, scary event for fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds, seventeen-year-olds. But they accomplished this very well, very well. We then had our kids go on to the region. The top twelve that we had went on to the regional, and of which we ended up having three-thirds and two honorable mentions. We will be sending five students to the state, as Ed told you, in May. Finishing first, and who is a little nervous about her speaking engagement today, will be Tamara Liang. She came in first in our science fair, so she is going to come and give you a little information about her project.
Okay.
Yep, it's audio.
Hi, I'm Tamara Liang. I'm a junior at North Quincy High School. I won first with my project, The Effects of Waffe Radiation on Drosophila and Monogaster, which are fruit flies. So what I did was that I exposed three vials of seventy-five fruit flies to an antenna of Waffe radiation, and I did that by breeding two generations of fruit flies. So I had to make sure they were all the common mutate, uh, common wild type that I was using, which were the red eyes, the round wing, and the straight wing versus their mutations of the white eyes, the serrated wing, so it's like the ends of the wings are kind of cut, and the curvy wing, so the wing curves like this instead of like this. And so what I found at the end of the project with a microscope was that a lot of them had white eyes, serrated wings, and curvy wings opposed to, with the ninety minutes of radiation opposed to the zero minutes of radiation, which is my control. And it's really significant with the white eye mutation because the white eye mutation is the least common mutation. So if you're seeing it in a sample of seventy-five fruit flies, it's pretty concerning. You wouldn't see wide-eyed fruit flies anywhere in nature in your own home. It'd be a little weird. So...
From the school committee.
Coming in second in our fair would be Grace Kelleher. I believe she also placed last year in our fair, and I'll... No, you placed in terms of you went to the regionals last year?
Me too.
Yes? Okay, I thought you did.
You wished to go.
She also will be, oh, you did? You, oh, I haven't, I don't know.
I didn't either.
I knew it. Grace?
Hi, my name is Grace Kelleher. I'm sophomore at North Quincy. So for my science fair project, I conducted an experiment to determine the capability of trichin blue as a viability dye in a heterogeneous population. Trichin blue is a stain that is able to penetrate the membrane of dead cells. The cells stained by trichin blue emit fluorescence that can be detected and measured by a flow cytometer, which is an instrument used for cell counting and cell sorting by means of a laser and a series of sensors. It was predicted that if the concentration of trichin blue in a pond water and trichin blue solution was increased, then the mean fluorescence channel detected by the instrument will also increase. Serial dilutions were performed to prepare samples with different concentrations of trichin blue. Fluorescence emitted by trichin blue binded to non-viable cells in the sample and were measured by sensors on the Accuray C six flow cytometer and reported using fluorescence channels. It was found in my experiment that the more concentrated samples caused a greater shift in fluorescence in comparison to the control. The results of this experiment are valuable to research in water quality and can aid in determining the viability of organisms in pond water and other, water from other sources. Thank you.
Grace? Coming in third in our fair was Luke Malloy, and he hopefully will have something to talk about his science project.
That's gonna be too well, Mr. ...
Yes. Hi, my name is Luke. As many of you on the committee might know, I'm a musician first. So when I was tasked, when I was tasked with coming up with a project for science fair, I decided to look for something that would actually be useful for me in what I do and what I've been pursuing as the spending years passed. And what I decided to go with was testing the different sound absorption abilities of different materials of acoustic panels, the kind you see in like recording studios where you can put up for soundproofing. So I tested foam, cotton, polyester, and fiberglass materials to see which ones absorb sound best. And so I used my sound pressure level meter, and I measured it in decibels, and I put it underneath the computer where I played like a sine wave, just a pure sound, and I measured it first without the, without the panels underneath, and then I put the panels on to see just exactly how much absorbed. I assumed going into it that the foam, that the foam panels would absorb the most, just because that's commonly what you see, that's the material that you see often, but my data actually showed that the fiberglass panels absorbed sound the best. And so I took that data and I put them up on the wall at my house so that when I start recording, I can use those, and it's very useful in my own life. We each get a complimentary CD when I make my videos. And that was my project.
I forgot I had something for UMass Boston.
Yes, okay. I thought you wanted to tell me that. Go ahead. Stand and tell.
I went to UMass Boston, that's a, I forgot to thank them.
She wanted to thank UMass Boston for their allowing her to go there to do her project.
Oh, we get to thank people?
No. As you can tell, Luke is kind of shy. So anyway, I wish to thank you for acknowledging their scientific prowess as they go along. Again, we only have tenth graders yet, so we're looking for bigger and better things. Eleven, you're eleven? I'm having, she's not mine. I'm sorry, she's not mine. She belongs to Ms. Kenny at this point. Chemistry teacher. Okay. But Grace is mine, and Luke is also Ms. Kenny's chemistry teacher. So again, I thank you.
Quincy High School students get there certain days. So I'd like you to come on up and shake hands, and then we'll take care of it.
Wow, this is different. The science fair wasn't different.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We want to thank the parents that are here too, the families that are here as well. So thank you very much.
It's always a pleasure to have science fair winners with us. They work so, so hard, and I'd like to thank, of course, our department heads as well as our principals for so much time they spend with our kids. Just a few things. On April first, the middle school swimming championship will be held with over a hundred middle school boys and girls participating at the Lincoln Hancock Pool. Again, on April first, and it's from nine o'clock to twelve o'clock. And again, thank the principals and so many of our middle school coaches for so much time and leadership that they offer. Other partnership activities, our grade five student council leadership summit was held last Thursday with seventy-five to eighty of our grade five students participating, along with eight of our class officers from North Quincy High School and Quincy High School. And I'd like to thank the YMCA for everything they did for their leadership activities during, during the morning. Beverly Tang, who is the, our Bella Foundation person that we deal with from our Bella, and they're a great partner. Ian Mayor Koch for their leadership remarks to all of our, all of our students. Also want to be able to thank, able to thank Carrie Barrett from the Tyrell Room, Keith Segala, Gianna Surler for their organization of a really great organization. Upcoming events, Credit for Life Fair is March twenty-third. Partnership Recognition Breakfast, March thirty-first. The Elementary and Middle School Robotics Middle School Challenge is May twentieth, but our grade five students are hard at work with their coaches preparing for that event, which is from about nine o'clock to two o'clock at Quincy High School. Our high school robotics program, successful as always, sponsored by Bluefin, a great partner that we have through, actually through the mayor's office in Vicarines and Planning. They went out to Worcester Polytech Institute and competed last week successfully. They lost in the quarterfinals, and twenty of our students participated. The next competition will be on March twenty-fifth and March twenty-sixth. Thirty of our students will participate at Bryant College. So I want to thank Mike Gendron for his coordinated leadership with such a great, great program. Of course, election evenings at North Quincy High School went very, very successfully. Quincy High School, because of the storm, has rescheduled this night for Monday on the twentieth at six-thirty, and of course, at Quincy High School. MSBA, the Accelerated Repair Program, want to thank Mayor Koch as well as our Quincy City Council for approving the appropriation, for our continued partnership with the MSBA. As you know, the Accelerated Repair Program is assisting this summer four of our schools with significant repairs with upwards of sixty-six percent reimbursement. In particular, the Beechwood Normal School will be upgraded with new windows, doors, a new roof, and EDA improvements. And our facilities subcommittee under the direction of Kathy Hubley will be presenting information about all of the sites involved. Wallaston School, Atherton Howe, Marymount, and again, Beechwood at their April eleventh Subcommittee meeting. On that same day, that evening, public buildings, city Quincy public buildings, will be sharing information with Beechwood Normal Parents and community at seven o'clock in the gymnasium. Our North Quincy, Quincy physics students will be traveling to Boston University. This is a rescheduled event. Follow-up meeting with Nobel Laureate, Dr. Sheldon Glassow. This is a great opportunity for our science students. The agenda for their day is at your places, for you to take a look at. It's impressive. And again, our high school principals and department heads, Ed Smith, Ken Panaro, as well as our principals deserve a lot of credit in making sure that this was rescheduled and will be such a successful event. On the, we had talked before about some sort of music camp during April break, and under the direction of Beth Hallett and music teacher Tracy O'Sullivan, plans our ongoing for a music camp for grades three, four, five students during April break on April eighteenth and nineteenth. A flyer will be available at our elementary schools later this week, another excellent opportunity during break for our students to still be part of the Quincy Public Schools. A very successful parent academy for a pay of two parents was held at Central last Thursday. Learning to Read One had thirty-five to forty parents, and many of our SLT under the direction of Erin Perkins, you know, our elementary principals and our elementary staff facilitated such a great event. Learning to Read Two will be held at Central again on Thursday, March twenty-third at six-thirty p.m. A reminder that Quincy High School Drama will present Hello, Dolly this weekend, March seventeenth to nineteenth. North Quincy High School will be back to the eighties on May fifth, sixth, and seventh. And Atlantic Middle School Drama Club will have a performance of The Lion King on March thirtieth, April first, and April second. And lastly, at your place is a Quincy High School newsletter, food services newsletter as well. as well, Quincy Quick Pots from Saratoga Field. One more item, I wanted to make sure we congratulate this young man in the front row here, Owen Darty, for becoming an Eagle Scout and such a lot of work. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you Superintendent. That's done, merely done, resolve business, say none, we'll move on to the next item, which is new business, and go back to the Superintendent.
As you can see, I brought reinforcements. Now, this evening, we're going to hear from SLT principals and teachers about their involvement in three significant initiatives within 10 of our elementary and middle school. And again, you know, when we look at the mission, we talked about this really two years ago, to take a look at, you know, every one of our schools and we'll show you a timeline. But ultimately, all the initiatives that we are working within right now is really about improving the teaching and learning process. That is the focus through a, that delicate balance that we always talk about, you know, that nurturing environment as well as high expectations of student achievement for each and every one of our students. And you've seen this before, these are, this is a chart of initiatives that we have, the shaded charts, the shaded initiatives, newer initiatives, that was for 1516. And at the bottom of the assessment and program evaluations is Rapid Reset. And one that we've talked to, the Subcommittee, Teaching Learning Subcommittee through Ms. Isola and Ms. Lebo, we've talked about Rapid Reset before for three of our schools, Bernzani, Snug Harbor, and Sterling. Now, as we move to 2016, 2017, again, reinforcing the fact that those shaded areas are all new initiatives. And what you see there, again, under Assessment and Progress, Programs, excuse me, Evaluations, are Reset Renewal, where those three schools are in year two of the initiative, as well as Collaborative Connections from Beechwood and Broad Meadows and Lincoln Hancock and Marshall. And lastly, the third down there is Principal's Path, and that's for Squanam, Wallaston, and Central Middle School. You know, throughout, we always talk about as principals and the SLT, we talk about these initiatives of Rapid Reset, Collaborative Connections, and Principal's Path, and we talk about what are the fundamental principles, what are the foundation elements of what we're doing at these schools. And we talk about distributive and relational leadership, we've talked about that before, successful school systems, possibly businesses, I don't know. Depend on distributing the leadership, it's not just about directors and coordinators, team administrators, principals, it's far more about a collective group of system people working together. And that's really what we have with distributive leadership and relational leadership, really is all about our teams. That's really what it's all about and making sure that we know how to get along in teams, what the roles are, and how much we can accomplish. The research-based piece is one we've talked about before, and the foundation of the principles of research-based are in the cartilage of effective schools, you know, looking at clear school mission, high expectations for success, instructional leadership, and consistent and frequent monitoring of students. And I think you'll hear about that with our principals and SLT this evening, as well as conditions for school effectiveness, making sure that we have school support and appropriate interventions, looking at effective instruction as well as consistent student assessment, professional development, and what's important here is structures for collaboration. And I think that's ever-present within the Quincy Public Schools, but even more within these initiatives. And then tiered instruction and always adequate learning time and family-school engagement. And the other piece of research that we drew from, Transformational School Research, and the distinctives of the research that many have done, the transformational schools. And as well, we're always building capacity, building capacity for teaching, learning, of course, from a classroom, but also building capacity to lead. And we've talked about for so many times, looking at all of our staff members as learners, as leaders, as facilitators, and team members. All of these initiatives, we make sure that, you know, there's no just one-shot wonder, you know, everything is connected within our district improvement plan. So all of the initiative, distinctives that you'll hear from our principals and SLT tonight, this evening, really have every bit of our, when we share with you our improvement timeline, this is what this is, the improvement timeline, starting with Superintendent's Plan, School Committee, and going through our school improvement plans, which you approve, our program improvement plans, which you approve, our tech plan, our initiatives that we talked about this evening, curriculum assessment, educator evaluation, our budget book, and grant book, as well as a significant professional development plan. All of these are embedded in all of the initiatives that we'll talk about this evening. So when we look at the system timeline, again, what we did was when we started Rapid Reset and we started talking about Rapid Reset, actually with the school committee, and many of your ideas are within this initiative, when we were talking about Snug Harbor and Sterling and Bernzani, we really talked about almost kind of an exclusive group. But the more we worked with the group and the more we saw progress from the staff, from our principals, from those three schools, we said this cannot be just, again, a one-shot wonder. We need to make sure that we accommodate all of these distinctives within the school system and get as many schools online as possible with the components that I'll show you in a minute. But we want to make sure that you understand, this isn't just, you know, we started in 2015 and that's it, 2016, that's it. We're going to continue this until January 2018, and I'm going to really take a reflective look at how we're doing and what progress we're making as a group of principals with the school committee to see what is so successful and what we need to do differently. So from 2015 to 2018, this is an ongoing process, and so that's our initiative timeline for all reset connections, and then again, Principal's Path all the way through to January 18. So the elements really, design team, you know, and our design team is something we're very proud of, that we work together from SLT, but it's always site, it's site-driven. So design teams operate as a planning team, they help communicate with other staff members about the initiative, what's going on. Ideally, it represents not only academic classroom teachers, but also academic program teachers and academic support staff. They meet regularly, share notes, this is voluntary, by the way, this is, these are teachers that meet after school, you know, when they can, because many, many have childcare, they need to get there and leave. So the agendas that the principals draw up or design team members draw up, you know, has to be pretty intense and get to what they need to do and get home. But we're so proud of so many that volunteer for this. They plan their goals, they plan an academic calendar, they're constantly talking about their grade level teams, their program teams, they contribute to school weekly newsletters, which I read, and I think our principals just put so much work into weekly newsletters, you know, that's K to 12. And then they also develop site-based professional development calendars and assessment calendars as well. Curriculum team meetings, not vertical team meetings, I'm sorry, vertical team meetings, you know, look at, again, all working together, review evidence for completion of the action steps that you approved within our school improvement plans. We look at sharing and analyzing student work, how important is that, so important, and ideas of scaffolding lessons, scaffolding units, opportunity to learn new instructional practices together, to talk about what works and what does not work. Obviously, they visit each other's classroom too, to see each other in the classroom, which is really something that has proven very, very valuable. Asking questions about each other's collaborative planning, and then develop formative assessments to measure consistently, measure student progress. The grade level teams, again, sharing lessons and resources at the grade level, looking at opportunities to, again, learn from practice, from instructional routines that each other have. Now, this year, of course, post-reading strategies or incorporating standards for mathematical practices as well. But always talking about how they plan and what's successful for their children at the grade level teams. ILTs, we've talked about ILTs, we've had them for probably about six or seven years anyway, constantly working together to look at students' work, analyzing real-time student data using data discussions to inform instruction, promoting grade level and vertical alignment, and strengthening communication and planning, and constantly leaking, not leaking, they're linking, good, Superintendent, the program teachers, the academic classroom teachers, and the academic support, all this discussion is happening at these meetings and really, you know, absolutely links so much of the great conversation that they have. The next is communication, and we try very much to have relentless communication. And they're constantly talking about calendars at their school, they're talking about the weeklies, they're talking about parent newsletters, curriculum newsletters on a regular basis. And we also, for Rapid Reset, we had an evaluation of the teachers at every site, just to see where they may need to go in year two, you know, from the teachers and the administration. And as well, you know, we'll do that this year to make sure we know where we're going and how successful, we think we're successful, but does everyone, does everyone on that plus? So very, very important communication. Site-based PD is another distinctive here, another element, and we look at minimizing time out of the building and minimizing time out of the classroom tailored to specific needs of each and every building, the grade, and the subject area. It also supports the immediate transfer of knowledge to practice. Teachers are constantly talking about what they do with our kids and how successful that is, teachers working with teachers. Focused academic after-school offerings, we would become much more of targeted instruction after school, but not losing the fact that it's okay to have a lot of enrichment activities after. So what the principals are doing is blending both the academic and the enrichment activities that they do, but that academic piece is very targeted to so much of the data that they get from this initiative. And last is family engagement, I think you'll see this evening, a couple of principals will be talking about family engagement. Every single principal at all our schools has increased family engagement, not only communication, but presence within the building. So those are key elements of where we are at this point in time. And... Do you want to run this, Matt?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
When we first introduced the Reset Initiative to you, we wanted to show you how closely aligned we were planning to be, that we started out with in terms of the system. So we used this chart to illustrate for you what that alignment would look like. All of the work for our upcoming school year, as you know, is a lot of work that's done during the summer, a lot of student assessment, the big picture ideas, so that we are ready to impart that knowledge to the principals, we're doing their own summer work, so that we can have as much information collected to give to the teachers in September as they prepare for their assessment day one. The alignment of the district improvement plan to the school improvement plans is intentional and therefore, we purposely and carefully connect what we, we purposely connected the three initiatives to what we already were doing in terms of our alignment process in terms of the improvement plans. The planning, examination of student work, the goal-setting and action steps tied to related PD, they're all part of an ongoing cycle of reflection and assessment.
It's hard to believe how far we've come already this school year, but we wanted to take a moment and remind you of the process and work we did thus far. Maddie just recently highlighted the importance of the district improvement plan and the alignment to the schools and initiatives. Embedded within this plan is our assessment days. Principals and their staff began the year looking at data and developing goals and action steps during assessment day one. It is during this important time that our schools identify areas of success and areas in need of improvement. They use this information to set the focus and the direction for the school year ahead. At the beginning of February, principals and staff participated in their second assessment day. During this time, teachers and principals analyze new student data, reflect and reset goals and action steps as necessary, and make needed changes to instructional groupings or instructional practices. Still yet to come is assessment day three. This meeting occurs at the end of the year and is an opportunity for staff to assess their progress, reflect on the past year, and begin planning for the next year, and of course, celebrate their successes. This timeline has been a crucial component of these initiatives. So I have the pleasure of introducing a video clip of two of the teachers who have been participants in the Rapid Reset Renewal for the past year and a half. They are from Snug Harbor and Sterling. You will hear both teachers discuss the impact that Rapid Reset has had on their schools and classrooms. They will also discuss how the staff has continued to work on and improve their practice through the continued work on this important initiative.
So last year, Sterling became part of the Rapid Reset Initiative, and a lot of great things came out of that. One of them is we were able to get longer classes in seventh, both the sixth and seventh grades, our students now have 70-minute periods instead of the 15 minutes we had in the past, which allows for a lot more time on learning. And to make that happen, we switched the curriculum for social studies for the sixth and seventh grade. So we've gone to a model that we're calling Humanities, where we've combined reading and social studies into the same class, which has actually been really great because it lets us do a lot of reading in the content area, do a lot of primary sources and informational text. The kids are really getting a lot of depth for each topic that's covered, you know, as they're reading multiple sources. We've been able to bring in fiction novels to pair with the content area, and the kids are really, really enjoying it. And with the longer classes, we're having time to explore and do more kind of project-based stuff as well, so that's been really great. And then another thing that came out of Rapid Reset is an effort to increase our parental involvement. So earlier in the year, we had a Wellness Night, which we had great attendance for, and so now we're looking at our second kind of fit, what we're calling Family Night, and this one's geared towards MPAS 2.0. So we've invited all the families from our community to come in to talk about the changes to the new tests, to, you know, play some games and do some activities surrounding testing, it's for parents and for kids. We're going to provide them with a pasta supper and a chance to sit down and talk with them, and kind of eat with them, and spend some time with them, and really get them to feel more part and more comfortable coming into the building. So those are some of the things that we've been working on this year.
Have basically created a mathematical community for the teachers here at Snug Harbor. I have been going into the classrooms on a weekly basis, and as a group, we meet once a month to go over data, where we analyze, interpret, and then come up with a plan of action for each teacher in each classroom. So the teachers feel that when we sit in the group at the data meetings, it's more of a team approach. There are more than one person discussing their student. So there's data from their point of view, but there's also data from my point of view, and I see their students on a weekly basis as well. So they feel that there's not only multiple assessments, but there's more than one person assessing their student, there's more than one person discussing each and every child, and then ways to help that student. So they really feel that it's a team approach and it's been very well received here at Snug Harbor.
Before we highlight two of the newest initiatives this year, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our co-presenters for the evening, who are well-equipped to talk about what's happening in the buildings with teachers and students. To my left, if I may start with Principal Diane O'Keefe, Principal at Beechwood Noel, Principal Dan Gilbert, Broad Meadows Middle School, Principal Steve Sylvia, Squanam Elementary, Principal Jim Hennessey from Wallaston Elementary, Principal DeCristoparo from Central Middle School, Principal Ruth Whitmer from Lincoln Hancock, and Principal Negahearn from Clifford Marshall. Our principals are here tonight to share some of the hard work that's happening in their buildings. You've heard a lot of this when they presented to you about their school improvement plans. However, the initiatives have sort of ramped things up and between conversations with their staff, then they have gone off in some different directions or solidified some ideas that they had. And they're going to talk about some of the most impactful components of the initiatives. So we're going to start with Collaborative Connections.
Thank you very much, Maddie, and thank you all very much for having me here this evening.
Thank you very much, Maddie, and thank you all very much for having me here this evening. I'm here tonight to speak about several different aspects of Collaborative Connections here at the Clifford Marshall Elementary School. One key component, and the superintendent just spoke to it a few moments ago, is the distributive leadership property, which is so important for us at the Marshall School. Again, one of the key components for us is our design team. Our design team, to give you a little bit of a tidbit of it, is made up of 19 teachers representing the grade levels at the Marshall School. That also includes an EL teacher, guidance staff, our physical education teacher, as well as certainly the assistant principal and myself on the team as well. What you see as we jump forward are several examples of the agendas that are set for those bi-weekly meetings. And again, these meetings, again, they're set a week ahead, and the meetings serve both to update the group with grade-level check-ins on our curriculum meetings, but also to plan further parent engagement that ties specifically into increasing academic performance. We're actually meeting this afternoon for our design team meeting and planning upcoming events. The Math Mania, which is familiar to us, and we've run before, and also looking forward to a cultural fair at the end of the year, as well as a kindergarten math event. One of the other events that we are very excited to focus on, it's really another highlight of the year for us, and something we'd not previously run, was our Literacy Night, One School, One Book Literacy Night. You're able to see highlights from our most recent school event, planned and designed by our literacy team, right up here on the screen. In early February, we planned a One School, One Book Literacy Night at the Marshall School, using the text Snowmen at Night, which was selected because it's a text that is accessible to the entire school. We celebrated the fitting theme of snow. As it so turns out, we actually had to postpone the event twice because of snow days. So that's, it made for a nice ambiance, I guess. Students received a copy of the book, read the book in school, and staff paired the text with grade-level supplemental text to complete a classroom project. Projects in the classroom ran a gamut focused on mathematics, writing, and artistic outcomes. Specific grade-level texts included Owl Moon, Snowy Day, and The Most Perfect Snowman, and led to specific academic outcomes, like coming to a better understanding of the states of matter through melting snowmen, analysis of poetry and thematic writing, and writing in response to text. We then invited our whole school to celebrate snow, as we lined the halls with our students' projects, and planned eight activities for students that evening. We were proud to welcome over 250 members of our school community that night to make sensory bags, marshmallow snowmen, and did some work in story sequencing, just to name a few of the activities they had that night. We're looking forward to our next event, and I'm grateful certainly for all the hard work of our design team at the Marshall. So they do really great work, and again, I thank you for the opportunity to share that tonight. Thank you, folks.
Good evening. On behalf of the entire Beachwood Knoll School community, I'd like to thank you all for your continued support. At Beachwood Knoll, I'm going to talk tonight about the grade-level and the vertical teams. Collaborative Connections has had a large impact on the Beachwood Knoll School. Teachers have come together through grade-level and vertical teams to reassess their own practices as well as the individual needs of the students. As an example of the collaboration, later in the presentation, you will see a clip of kindergarten teacher Lauren Lindsay discussing the impact Collaborative Connections has had on her grade-level team and the instruction she provides to her students. The grade-level teams are working together to incorporate a more rigorous curriculum to better prepare our students for the demands of the 21st century. Teams have been working all year with the curriculum administrators on in-house professional development to enrich current practices and to apply close reading and guided math programs to their daily instruction. The in-house professional development, you'll see on this slide here, is the agenda for one that we did with Sue Lumi, and that was this past March 6th. And as I mentioned earlier, I believe the BKS teams have been so enriched by Collaborative Connections meeting, and most certainly by our in-house professional development. The members of the superintendent's leadership team, the curriculum team administrators, have been incredibly supportive. At least one of them has attended our weekly design team meetings and the Collaborative Connections meeting, and have worked with the teachers during grade-level meetings to review student assessment data and plan and implement the curriculum and instruction based on the students' needs. They have not only provided their expertise, but they also have provided needed materials to support our new initiatives. We have been very fortunate to work with Sue Lumi's Math Professional Development. It has been an invaluable tool for the grade-level and vertical teams with the introduction of Guided Math this year. Sue has met with the vertical and grade-level teams, she's conducted a number of talks in the classrooms, completed observations to help support teachers, and provided materials and suggestions to support their work in the classroom. This site-based PD has helped facilitate the carryover of what is learned in professional development and how it is directly implemented in the classroom. This continuous support has been a positive impact on the teachers' instruction, and as a result, student learning. So again, I want to thank you, and this other slide here is our notes on our Collaborative Connections. Thank you.
Good evening. My objective this evening is to give you a little insight into the vertical teams at Lincoln Hancock, and also into how we're engaging our families at a more rigorous level. So at Lincoln Hancock, we have had vertical teams in English Language Arts and Math for years. Typically, we have met three times each year, and team members voluntarily met either before or after school or on the preparation time. The vertical teams were comprised of members from all grade levels, kindergarten through grade four. Collaborative Connections has benefited the school by allowing the vertical teams to meet more frequently. We now meet once per month. We have also divided the vertical teams into two teams for each discipline. One comprised of a representative from kindergarten through grade two, and the other made up of teachers from grade three and four and an interventionist. The teams have been able to move forward on multiple fronts, discussing small group instruction, independent reinforcement activities, common assessments, and the implementation of professional development. Coverage for these vertical team meetings are provided by in-building staff, who are able to teach a mini lesson to the children. Collaborative Connections has given us the opportunity to work in smaller groups and hone in on the topics that are really specific to grade-span needs. As Nick spoke about, we have also been working to increase the opportunities that parents have to engage in the school. Typically, we have very good attendance at our literacy and math nights, report card conferences, and PTO-sponsored events. We still felt that there were more opportunities out there to engage families. The design team meetings were the spark for some new events at Lincoln Hancock this year. The kindergarten team has increased the number of what we call Family Fun Days. Periodically, on Tuesday afternoons, parents are invited to participate in an activity with their child. On next Tuesday, the 21st, all the kindergartners are invited with their parents to plant seeds. Hopefully, spring is in the coming weeks, we hope. Our ESL team also has reached out to parents of our English learners. Again, on a Teacher Tuesday, EL families are invited to participate with their children in an activity. This gives our parents a chance to meet other parents and make connections in the community. Parents who are bilingual have volunteered to translate the invitation, so all the parents are in the know. During the week of Dr. Seuss's birthday, we held a Seuss Day Tuesday. Eight stations were set up in the gym, and parents traveled with their children as they participated in each center. We have also added what you might call mini lessons before our monthly PTO meetings. Topics of interest to particular grade levels are discussed. For instance, math strategies for addition and subtraction was a topic for our second-grade parents. MCAS 2.0 was the topic for grade three and grade four parents. With the advent of Collaborative Connections and the support of Cottington, Lincoln Hancock has benefited and moved forward in our mission to help children grow. Thank you.
Good job, Ruth.
Good evening. A pleasure to see everyone. I'm going to preface my remarks by...